Progress.
I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 2nd meeting of the San Joseph County Board of Commissioners to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order or item on the agenda is opening reading of bids. It appears there are none. We'll move on to reports and requests, Board of Commissioners, the accounts payable docket. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second, Commissioner Castelny, Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero.
Next, we have Employee of the Month. This is one of the best things we get to do each month and as commissioners to celebrate the great work by our employees. So I will turn this over to Commissioner Fleming.
Thank you so much. Okay. All right. Our Employee of the Month is Barb Hollinger. Okay. And Barb was the secretary assigned to juvenile delinquency case load from the summer of 2019 until recently. She was very organized, responsive, and professional in specialized area that requires diligence and a quick response, given that the state has only 20 days to go to the trial for juveniles who are in custody. As a result, the office must respond quickly to the evolving demands of cases to meet statutory deadlines. This is a nuanced field of law, given the specific legal requirements for juveniles, and Barb has been instrumental in developing the case management procedures for juveniles in the delinquency system. Her attention to detail and organizational skills allowed for operational continuity during the COVID-19 public health emergency, and we are really appreciative for her contributions. So Barb, you want to come up? Oh, there she is. Okay, good. Yes.
Say a couple of words if you'd like.
Anybody, please. Then we have. Do you want to get a picture then? Okay, good.
Give her a round of applause.
Yay! Congratulations. Thank you so much for all you did. Thank you. There's this, and this is for you too.
Oh, okay.
Yes, you're welcome.
Say a couple of words if you like, if you like, or if you just... Okay, I get you. I got it.
I'm not a speech person.
There you go. Congratulations. Sure you put that on the wall.
I'd also like to thank Elizabeth McGrath, who nominated, or McGrath, who nominated Barb as well. So it's great.
Yes. Where, is Elizabeth here? Oh, okay, because I was hoping she could come up and make some comments too about it. Yeah.
One of the other great things we get to do is we celebrate a business, a citizen, and a youth each month. So it's my pleasure to announce that the September Youth of the Month, we're a little late, but we're still, we're still within the window, goes to Flannery Fangman. She became one of the first females in the country to receive an Eagle Scout Award. Shortly after she entered the Notre Dame Gateway Program this fall, she began scouting in 2019, once they opened their, opened the doors to girls. And then, joining at age 17, somewhere before her junior year of high school, they were given two years, a two-year extension from that day to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout. They gave Flannery two years to complete the requirements through her final two years of high school. Throughout this time, she ran cross-country in the fall, played lacrosse in the spring, sang in the Notre Dame Children's Choir, which will, hopefully you can give a short rendition of something when we call you up to the mic, and performed in her first musical. So this is an amazing accomplishment in such a short amount of time. So let's give Flannery a big round of applause. And please, come up to the microphone. I won't be quite so nice as I was with the microphone there. And just share a little bit about what was your, what was your project?
My project was a blood drive with San Joseph County through the Red Cross. It was during COVID or just after COVID when things started to open back up. So luckily, San Joseph High School was willing to host my blood drive. And through all of the community support, we had 45 people able to donate. And the hospitals have just been in such need, so it was really great to see how excited the nurses were for how many people were coming.
That's awesome. And what musical did you perform in?
I was in Godspell.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, I mean, you...
What part did you play?
I was chorus B, I believe. It was my first musical, so I have been in choirs before, so I luckily did have a duet. But I'm not really great on stage.
Well, you wouldn't know it by this.
Thank you.
I mean, Dolly, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, no, just that I'm incredibly proud of her. She followed her brother and never thought she'd have a chance to be in scouting, let alone get an Eagle Scout. And so she joined and was determined to do it and did.
Awesome. Why don't you come on up, Flannery? We'll give you a plaque, then we'll get a picture. Mom, if you want to come up too. Another round of applause. All right, now we move on.
Bye-bye. Take care.
Move on to Adult Probation, request approval to apply for grant funds through the Indiana Office of Court Services to help support the Division of Pre-Trial Services.
Good morning. Jesse Carlton, Chief Probation Officer with the Adult Probation Department, offices located here on the fourth floor of the county city building. We're just requesting approval to apply for grant funds. We have, we have received this grant in the past. It helps support the Pre-Trial Services Division, which includes three part-time public defenders who provide legal representation at the initial hearing, which is a new and novel idea, along with the probation officer and supervisor probation officer assigned to that division.
Thank you. Jesse, any questions from the board? Is there a motion?
Yes, a motion to approve for applying for the grant funds through the Indiana Office of Court Services.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero.
All right, move on to the Health Department, request approval to apply for grant funds with the Indiana Department of Health to support COVID-19 response efforts in K through 12 schools. See Amy on the call?
Yes. Amy Rupi, Administrator with the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building. And before you is a request to apply for a grant through the Indiana Department of Health. We would hire staff at our local health department level to ensure continued delivery of COVID-19 response within the schools in our district.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I just wanted to know what the amount of money would be that we could get from the grant.
That is unknown at this time. The overall grant is $40 million that the state received. They're expecting about 25% of that to go directly to the schools, and then the rest divided up between the local health departments willing to participate in this program.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve to apply for the grant funds through the Indiana Department of Health to support the COVID-19 response efforts in K through 12 schools.
Second. We have a motion and second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero.
Moving on to Human Resources. First item is request approval of a contract addendum with JWF Specialty for Workers Compensation and Liability. Ms. Kim?
Good morning. Kim Karkowitz, Human Resource Director, San Joseph County, offices on the seventh floor of this building. Before you is the addendum to our current contract with the JWF, who is our third-party administrator. And this would be extending services for another year. You'll see that that was a minor increase, and we are working with the broker to look for bids as of next year. But at this time, we would like to move forward with the addendum moving them to another year.
As a matter of fact, your consultant, Mr. Frick is on the call as well. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
There is a motion to approve the contract addendum with JWF.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero.
Next, request approval of a contract with Beacon Health for employee clinic management. Kim?
So this contract was brought to you before in a proposed changes where you guys had signed off on it, but this is the actual full contract for the management services for our employee clinic that is run by Beacon.
Once again, Mr. Frick is on the call. Are there any questions or comments from the board? I will just say, the, this paragon, our employee clinic, is one of the best things San Joe County has ever done. So I appreciate all the hard work that Kim does and Mr. Frick in making this happen. It is truly one of the best things we've ever done. So are there any, is there a motion?
Well, there is, but I was just going to suggest it too, that I'm so proud that we have that and so happy that we have that to help our people in our county like that. So anyway. Yeah, and there'd be a motion then to approve the contract with, with the Beacon Health for the employee clinic management.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Maintenance, request approval of two quote awards for courthouse construction projects. Brian, happy belated birthday as well.
Brian Davidson, Building Engineer for San Joseph County, offices located in the basement of this building. First project is at the 1855 courthouse. There's a much-needed repair on the courthouse steps to minimize any hazard that could happen because of the imperfections in the concrete. Gibson Lewis was the winning bid on that. Can I do these together? Do you guys want them separate?
Counselor?
Do them separately, sir.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the...
A motion to approve the award to Gibson Lewis would be appropriate.
Yeah, I was just going to say that to the Gibson Lewis LLC contractors. Yes.
Yeah, I'll second that.
We have a motion and second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero.
The next, Brian, and take the next item.
Second project is in the felony court. Some modifications need to be done to one of the judge's bench to meet the court's needs. That also was awarded to Gibson Lewis.
Questions or comments from the board?
I was just going to say that both of these are situations with issues with the courthouse.
Both courthouses, separate courthouses. So one's felony, one's 1855.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Yes, a motion to approve the quote awards to the courthouse for the premium concrete services.
Second.
No, no, that's not the motion. We just did concrete. This is to the bench. Is that right, Brian?
That's correct.
Oh, it was Gibson?
They're both Gibson. It's the second one.
Oh, I said premium concrete services is what it says here.
It's the second one.
Oh, down here. Oh, I'm sorry, down there.
Motion to approve the award to Gibson Lewis for bench repair would be appropriate.
I'm sorry. Yeah, down there is the...
So moved.
... construction. Second.
We have a motion and second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I misread that.
Next, the Sheriff, request approval of a contract with WellPath LLC for inmate healthcare services.
Good morning. Sheriff Bill Redmond, San Joe County Police, offices located at the jail, 401 West Sample Street in South Bend. In front of you this morning for the approval of the contract with San Joe County and WellPath LLC. Just a little back history and a reminder of why we're here in front of you today and how we got to this point. Back in the fall of 2019, we were under a contract with Beacon Medical at that time, which was a three-year contract. 2019 was the last year of that contract, and Beacon decided not to renew. So that put us in a predicament. We put out a request to replace Beacon, and we had a few companies present to us and make a proposal, one of them being WellPath LLC. We decided at that time that we didn't have enough time to do a contract. We ended up taking over Beacon. The nurses came and became county employees for 2020. And at that time, we said that we would still continue to look for a company to take over that. And that's, and then during 2020, obviously COVID struck and kind of put everything on hold. So after that, we fast-forward, started, Troy started communicating with WellPath again. WellPath comes to us, highly recommended. They provide services for Marion County Sheriff's Department. So I spoke to Sheriff Bailey there, who recommends them highly. Elkhart County, Sheriff Siegel also. And then in Marion County, Sheriff Forstall also utilizes WellPath. So they come to us highly recommended, and I support this contract. So I'll turn it over to Attorney Troy Warner to talk a little bit more about that actual contract.
Morning. Troy Warner, Legal Advisor for the County Police Department, 401 West Sample Street in South Bend. The total contract with WellPath is for $2.88 million. This is about $300,000 than we expect to spend directly on medical in 2021. We believe, however, bringing a national organization that does jail medical throughout the country with a great deal of upper-level structure will bring us cost savings in a number of different ways. One of those is regarding salaries and wages for our nursing staff. Through COVID, nursing salaries have gone up dramatically. We, we have, are now about 10 nurses short. We've had a great deal of recruiting and retaining nurses as salaries have gone up and how the, and as the medical industry has become more stressful through all of this. We expect we would need to increase our wages probably 12 to 15% to be able to get fully staffed again. We've had a great difficulty with the hip reimbursement, getting reimbursed through the state for long-term medical, or long-term hospitalizations for our inmates. They have people that do that currently, staff on, in Nashville that do that already for Elkhart County and for Marion County in Indianapolis. The, oh, the county right now, it's self-operated, so we take the liability. This year, we're going to see a significant increase in our medical malpractice insurance. As we continue to self-operate, those medical malpractice fees will go up and up over time. In addition, we also take the risk. So right now, as we're getting sued, and when in the past, the medical provider would actually be the one that, that would get sued on the medical claims. And we believe that right now, it's, it's time to turn this back over to a, a private provider. Beacon handled the contract for about three decades, and then in 2019, they determined they were going to get out of the jail medicine industry. And that kind of left us with not much of an option. And we believe that WellPath will be a great benefit for the county, the inmates, and for the residents.
Thank you. So I do want to applaud your hard work, the sheriff and Mr. Augustine as well, because you got this issue kind of dumped in your lap extremely, extremely late in the game so that you were able to pivot and provide a high level of care in this situation was amazing. But then obviously, that was never a long-term solution. So I appreciate your hard work coming and, and hiring professionals to do the work that professionals should do, because we're not in the, in the healthcare management system as at least drug providers. So I appreciate, bless you, all the work that you did. Any questions or comments from the board?
Sure. I have a comment. I don't think the general public is aware of the hundreds and over the years, thousands of people that go through the jail, and it's our, your responsibility and county's responsibility to make sure everything is, is that you can provide is very good. So I think this is another great step, like President Castelny said, for all the people that work there, especially for all of your employees that have to deal with that and all the nurses. It's a tough gig going in there, but everybody does a great job. So thanks for all your work.
Yes. Thank you.
Are there no more questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
Yes, there are. A motion to approve the contract with the WellPath LLC for the inmate healthcare services.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agreement with WellPath. It's been motioned and seconded. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Moving on to Infrastructure Planning and Growth. First item is the consent agenda. We have a traffic regulatory request for Old Cleveland Road from Dietem Boulevard to Primrose Road for a no, for a new no-truck sign. Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero.
Next, request approval of an engineering services proposal for a regional detention study along Phillips Ditch watershed.
Sky Matters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the seventh and eleventh floor. What you have before you is a request for Engineering Services to look at a study along Phillips Ditch. Phillips Ditch is the area where we saw extensive flooding in 2016, and also the area where we have been able to successfully perform the, buy out several homes through, using FEMA funds and demolish those homes. And what this study will do is it'll look up within the watershed for opportunities to potentially store some of that runoff so we can limit the amount of runoff that's getting to the area and thus help decrease flooding there. And the reason for this study is to get some costs and alternatives together so if any future grant opportunities come down, we're ready for getting those grant opportunities. That is for McCormick Engineering would be doing that, and it would be paid jointly funded from the surveyor's legal drain assessment fee for Phillips Ditch and also lit. We recommend your approval and happy to answer any questions.
Are there in fact any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, could you just give everybody in particular kind of the area specific to where that ditch is?
Yeah, it's, that ditch flows from the southern end of the county. It flows up through, you get portions of it through Miami Trails. It goes under, well, it's, it's in the Jewel Woods area. It's just south of the bypass, west of the New 31. And that area there, everything...
In the area of St. Jude's and so on through there. There you go.
And it's, it's a, it's an area too where the flooding itself, it's a very difficult situation because everything tends to back up once it reaches a certain point because of the culvert under the bypass. And there's no way we're going to get another culvert under the bypass. So we're looking for those opportunities further up to be able to reduce flooding there. And it's, the Hidden Creek, is it Hidden Creek? Is that the subdivision is over in that area?
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Sky? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the engineering services proposal.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sky. Next, request approval of an interlocal agreement with the Redevelopment Commission for the town of Lakeville's Community Barn and Wetland Park Site. Mr. Bill?
Good morning. Bill Shalio, Economic Development, part of Infrastructure Planning and Growth with offices on seventh and eleventh floor. Before you today is a memorandum. In, in the packet is an interlocal agreement and a memorandum describing the agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the Redevelopment Commission for the town of Lakeville. The agreement is specific to providing county funds that are currently within the lit budget to assist with finalizing public infrastructure improvements related to the Lakeville Community Barn and Wetland Park Site. The public infrastructure improvements include a number of sidewalk elements and some other work that's going to be done or has been done as part of this barn project. The barn was dedicated on October 21st with an official ribbon-cutting event and is really going to be a long-term benefit for the community. The county had previously participated back in January of 2017 with using funds to help purchase the property. So this kind of is, is full circle and helps finish out. Any remaining money that is needed on the project will be supplemented by the Redevelopment Commission at the town of Lakeville. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
I do want to thank you. That's one of the things, and when we created Bill's position and brought him on, the, one of the focuses was how can we be helpful to, to our smaller cities and towns that may not have the resources? So I think this is another great example of partnership between us and Lakeville as how we can help improve their quality of life and bring resources that they, they certainly can use. Any questions or comments from the board?
Sure. I'd like to thank Bill and Sky and John Law. We all came down there with the representatives of Lakeville. If you haven't been down there, the barn is very cool, that whole area. With all the plans they want to do through biking, hiking, walking is, is a very unique area. So again, thank Bill and his, his people and Sky and everybody else. Because if you haven't been down there, you need to go down there, ask for Terry Young, I believe, and he will be able to help you around the area. It's a good job. Thank you.
Yes, I agree, and thank you very much. Thank you.
If there are no more questions or comments from the board, is there a motion?
A motion to approve the interlokal agreement with the Redevelopment Commission for the town of Lakeville's Community Barn and Wetville Park Site.
Second.
Or Wetland Park Site.
We have a motion and second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero.
Moving on to old business. We have two items. The first is Ducom Community Corrections, request approval of equipment leases with US Bancorp Government Leasing and Finance, Inc. So Counselor?
On table would be appropriate.
Okay. Does the motion to untable exist?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion to untable this matter and a second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
The matter is live and active.
Ms. Sharon?
Thank you. Sharon McBride, 40161 Lathrop Street. Requesting approval for leasing, five-year lease term with US Banc using, utilizing our project income fund in the amount of $196,000. Also have Randy Squadroni, my finance manager, on Zoom if you have additional questions. And I want to thank Attorney Woods and John Murphy for helping to acquire the five-year lease. But we are asking for three vehicles. Our radios are not in compliance with, and it's not interfaced any longer with the police department for us to have interaction out in the field when we're doing our home visits. So it is in dire need of upgrading. Also asking for two laptops in our vehicles when we are out doing our home visits. We have about 100 clients on house arrest at this time, and we're asking for, asking for safety vests. During this pandemic, we have seen an increase of, when we're going out to people's home, more violent interaction for our staff. And we were actually involved in crossfire of gunfire when we went to another home. So we're just asking approval for the lease agreement in the amount of $196,000, utilizing our project income funds for over a term of five years.
Any questions or comments?
Yes. Isn't this part of the stuff that we were talking about, like March, April?
Yes.
That we went to the council and that just kind of, okay, we don't have to do that. Are you asking for any ballistic vests in this?
Yes, we have 16 vests that we're asking for.
Because that again, the, I, yes, okay.
Yes.
I'm good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve... Motion to approve this lease agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Costelli, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you, Sharon. Now we have an add-on in old business for your meeting pleasure. We have Polite Safety Communication Consortium request approval of a contract for snow removal with jewel property maintenance. This is on and we were looking to get different quotes, so the first step would be to remove this from old business.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to remove this matter and untable it. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Costelli, how do you vote?
Aye.
I believe Ray is on the call. Turn things over to you.
Good morning. Ray Schultz, Executive Director at PSAP Ops at 58266 Downey Avenue. There were some questions at the last meeting in reference to this, the snow plowing contract. It actually comes up pretty much every year when we do this about other vendors and we did reach out to multiple other vendors and, and did not get a response back. And the long and short of it is that it's about the, the salt applications every four hours because of how our shifts change, that we cannot afford for a slippery sidewalk, parking lot area. So we have to have somebody come out every four hours to evaluate the, the need to put down salt. So if you remember, three years ago, we had a couple of slip-and-fall injuries and the mistime actually cost more than the contract to prevent the slip-and-fall injuries. So we, we reached out again without, without success. Sean's been, been great at meeting our demands and, and getting it done very well. So I humbly request you to approve this.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Sure. I, I questioned this at our last meeting, so I appreciate Ray and everybody working out there. I think that that was going to be the net end result, that nobody else had any interest in, in bidding for that, but your people did a good job of putting it out there, giving everybody the opportunity to bid and we'll just go from there. So good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this contract of snow removal with the jewel property maintenance.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Costelli, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Moving on to public comments. Are there any public comments? You have three minutes to address the board. Please state your name and address.
Sharon McBride, Executive Director, Ducom Center, 40161 Lathrop Street. Just want to say a special thank you to the commissioners. I will be going down to Indianapolis on November the 16th, accepting the award for Ducom Center four-year award. We were one of the first in the state for having a community corrections program. So I am honored that you all saw the vision to have the need in St. Joe County. So thank you so much for being a part of that. So thank you.
Thank you for, for making that happen, because you're the reason why you're going down to Indianapolis.
I have a question. Isn't that like a three or four-day conference?
Yes.
Could you give us daily reports, please?
I absolutely will.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you. Have a good time.
Thank you.
Mr. Caruso.
Good morning, Commissioners, Councillor, Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlyle. I'm here to speak on the redistricting issue that was in the paper this week. My friends and I, neighbors in New Carlyle, all of township and from other parts of St. Joseph County have put in a lot of work to kind of keep an eye on the development that keeps getting proposed over in our area, tearing up our farmland, possibly putting what, who knows what into the aquifer. We still haven't gotten the report on what went into the aquifer from the million gallons poured on the recent shredder fire. I'm, I'm not, I know that the redistricting process, it says every 10 years, you, you review this and see if, if, if things need to be shifted around. I don't, I don't know what the precedent is. There, it doesn't seem to me like between 2010 and 2020, a 7,000 total population change from 200 and, oh gosh, where'd it go? 266,700 to 273,500 would call for major, if any, changes in the way the districts are set up. Everybody is fairly represented to, to, no, no disrespect to Commissioner Costelli. But had he been the candidate for office over on our ballot in all of township and New Carlyle, we would not have supported him because he has been, he has been for all this development, everything, without question. He's just supporting, of course, the, the trailer park debacle, which there are still eight trailers sitting there since Christmas Eve. Nothing happening there. The place is still an eyesore. Just because the weeds are cut down does not make it any less an eyesore. But to disenfranchise our voices over there with the person we have elected who has taken an interest in our plight to, that we have been silenced. There's been no transparency. To, we finally get somebody who is speaking up for us, who is taking a stand. I'm sorry he's irritating some people with the county who don't like to be irritated. But this, and I know you've said, there's no chicanery going on here, Commissioner. I find that really hard to believe for 6,500 in a total population growth to totally change our voice. We now, we now have, instead of a person we voted for who now speaks for us, the person who's going to represent us spoke against us all along.
That's three minutes, Mr. Caruso. Thank you today.
Thank you so much. Everybody have a great day.
Thank you, Dan. Any other public comments from the room? Any public comments from our friends on Zoom?
May I speak?
Most certainly. Name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Cheryl Nix. I live at 17901 Sable Ridge Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46635. At the last Commissioner's meeting, I spoke of my concern about the hiring of Bosma's firm to draw new Commissioners districts. After seeing the proposed districts, I'm here today to let you know that my concerns remain. There is nothing more critical to a democracy than the right to vote and equal representation for citizens. It is essential that voters like me feel we have a say in who is elected, the policies and legislation proposed, and the decisions made. When districts are manipulated to favor candidates, draw out elected officials, it appears that elected officials that are drawing the districts are choosing their voters. And I find this discouraging. And stating that there is no chicanery does not make it true. I oppose the proposed districts as they are now drawn. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Any other comments from our Zoom folks? Seeing none, a motion to recess is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Let me call the rule. Sorry, I was putting stuff up. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Costelli, how do you vote?
Aye.